I now yield Honorable Chair to the wisdom of Chairman of Committee on Health and Sanitation, Honorable Catherine Lynn to introduce an adequate motion on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Catherine Lynn is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion on this memorandum of agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a requested resolution authorizing the local Chief Executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the SM Law and Tobias Feliciano Faith General Hospital to avail of the hospital's laboratory examination services for first reading with reservation.
For first reading with reservations as being manifested by Honorable Lynn, this proposed resolution. Motion approved on the first reading with reservations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this memorandum of agreement states that, "SM Law Memorial City General Hospital, represented by Honorable Henry N. D. Wominal Jr., City Mayor, called the First Party. Tobias Feliciano Faith General Hospital Incorporated, represented by Angel T. Feliciano Jr., Medical Director, called the Second Party. The First Party and the Second Party hereby mutually agreed and stipulated to the following terms and condition herein. Likewise, the First Party has requested to the Second Party that they will be sending admitted patients of SM Law Hospital for laboratory examination in their hospital if particular tests are not available or certain tests have unavailable reagents and the patients will pay for the charges, except for full health patients wherein the SM Law Hospital will pay for the charges. This agreement shall commence on March 1, 2023 until December 31, 2023. Due to its public health interest, Madam Chair, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, waiving the internal rules."
Passing this on the second and final reading for an authority would the Honorable City Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement as being stated by the Honorable Lynn between the East Imlaw Memorial City General Hospital, represented by Honorable Henry N. D. Wominal Jr., between Tobias Feliciano Faith General Hospital Incorporated. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rule, this authority of the Mayor to enter into this memorandum of agreement. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In session number 10, approved by this House committee is the request of City of Ozymes for us to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the East Imlaw Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail the hospital's X-ray procedure services. Again, yield to wisdom Chairman of Committee on Health and Sanitation Hospital, Honorable Catherine Lynn to introduce an adequate action on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
The committee chair on health is now recognized by the Chair, Honorable Lynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution for first reading with reservation, a resolution authorizing the local Chief Executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the SM Law Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's X-ray procedure services, Madam Chair.
For first reading reservations as being manifested by the Honorable Lynn. Motion approved on the first reading reservation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For urgent implementation and public health demand, under this memorandum of agreement, SM Law Memorial City General Hospital, represented by Attorney Henry N. D. F. Wominal Jr., City Mayor, called the First Party, and Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Senior Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin S. Sanchanco, Medical Center Chief, a second party, hereby mutually agreed and stipulated to the following terms and condition, that the First Party has requested to the Second Party that they will be sending admitted patients from the SM Law Hospital for X-ray to their hospital to be transported by the First Party. The patients will be the one to pay for the charges or fees, except for full health patients where the First Party will be the one to pay after necessary documents are processed. This agreement shall commence on March 1, 2023 until February 28, 2024. Madam Chair, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Passing this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules as being manifested by the Honorable Lynn. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In session number 11, approved by this House committee is the request for us to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the East Imlaw Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail the services of the hospital's medical equipment technician. Again, yield wisdom of Honorable Catherine Lynn, Chairman of the Committee on Health and Sanitation of Hospitals, Honorable Chair, to introduce an adequate action on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Lynn, we are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass this for first reading with reservation, a resolution authorizing the local Chief Executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the SM Law Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail the services of the hospital's medical equipment technician.
Item number one?
First reading with reservation.
Is that item number one?
Number three, Madam Chair.
The first one is East Imlaw. And the third now?
Third, Madam Chair.
You're passing the third, number three?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the East Imlaw Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail the services of the hospital's medical equipment technician?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Passing that on?
First reading with reservation.
Passing that on the first reading reservation. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to public health interest and urgency of implementation, under this memorandum of agreement, SM Law Memorial City General Hospital, represented by Attorney Henry N. D. Wominal Jr., as the First Party, Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero as Senior Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin Sanchanco, Medical Center Chief, as the Second Party. The First Party has requested the Second Party that they will avail the services of Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Senior Medical Center to conduct a preventive and corrective maintenance of hospital medical equipment in house repair and conduct user's training. This agreement shall commence on March 1, 2023 until February 28, 2024. I would like to pass this for second reading, waiving the, and final reading, waiving the internal rules, Madam Chair.
Passing this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules as being stated by the Honorable Lynn. Passing this on the second and final reading.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is there any comment? Remarks? Hearing none. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In session number 12, approved by this House committee is a request to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Romero, to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the East Imlaw Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail all the hospital's newborn hearing screening test. Again, yield wisdom of Honorable Catherine Lynn, the Chairman of Committee on Health and Sanitation, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Lynn, we are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass this for first reading with reservation, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the SM Law Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's newborn hearing screening test, Madam Chair.
Passing that on the first reading with reservations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this... Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this memorandum of agreement, SM Law Memorial City General Hospital, represented by Attorney Henry F. Wominal Jr., as the First Party, Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Senior Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin S. Sanchanco, Medical Center Chief, as the Second Party. First Party has requested to the Second Party that they will be sending admitted patients from SM Law Hospital for newborn hearing screening test in their center and the patient will pay for the charges, except if the patient is full health wherein SM Law Hospital will pay for the charges after necessary documents are processed. This agreement shall commence on March 1, 2023 until February 28, 2024. Madam Chair, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Passing this on the second and final reading, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement or the MOA between the East Imlaw Hospital and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's newborn hearing screening tests. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Hearing none. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number 13, approved by this House committee is a request for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Romero, to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the East Imlaw Hospital and Mars Medical Center to use the hospital's ambulance. Again, yield to Honorable Catherine Lynn to recommend action on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Catherine Lynn, we are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the SM Law Hospital and Mars Medical Center to use the hospital ambulance for first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
For first reading reservations, this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Wominal. Motion approved on first reading with reservations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this memorandum, SM Law Memorial City General Hospital, represented by Attorney Henry N. D. Wominal Jr., City Mayor, and Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Senior Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin S. Sanchanco as Medical Chief, represented as the Second Party, that the First Party is the owner of the public hospital known as SM Law Memorial City General Hospital and the Second Party shall allow the First Party to maintain and operate the ambulance of the Second Party upon the request of the First Party. That the Second Party should not be held liable to any damages incurred or suffered by any third party in connection with the use of said ambulance. That the Second Party shall not be held liable for any accountability relative to any employee that may be engaged by the First Party during the operation of the said ambulance. That the First Party can only avail of the use of the ambulance depending on the availability of the driver and its assisting medical staff of the Second Party. The ambulance of the Second Party may not be used if entails an increased risk on the ambulance, its driver, and the assisting medical staff of the Second Party. That in the event that the First Party and the Second Party at the same time would need the use of said ambulance, the Second Party has the preference to use such ambulance. This term of agreement will be for one year beginning March 1, 2023 and ends on February 28, 2024. Due to its urgent demand for implementation and public health needs, I would like to pass this on second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Passing this on the second and final reading, being manifested by the Honorable Lynn. This resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement or the MOA between the East Imlaw Hospital and Mars Medical Center to use the hospital's ambulance. More for its approval on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing none. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In session number 14, approved by this House committee is the request for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Romero, to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Office and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's X-ray procedure services. Again, yield to Honorable Catherine Lynn to recommend action on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Catherine Lynn, we are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to avail the hospital's X-ray procedure services for first reading with reservation.
For first reading with reservation, the Honorable Lynn is passing this. For first reading with reservation, the manifested resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this memorandum, City Health Office Ozymes, represented by Honorable Henry Wominal as the First Party, Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin Sanchanco, as the Second Party. The First Party and Second Party mutually agreed and stipulated the following terms and condition, that the First Party has requested to the Second Party that they will be sending patients of Health Office, City Health Office for X-ray in their hospital and the patient will pay for the charges, except the full health patients where the City Health Office will pay. This agreement shall commence on February 8, 2023 until February 8, 2024, or unless mutually terminated by both parties. Due to its public demand and interest, Madam Chair, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Passing this on the second and final reading, manifested by the Honorable Lynn, this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Offices, CHO and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's X-ray procedure services. More for its approval on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks? Hearing none. Motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In session number 15, approved by this House committee is a request for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Romero, to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to avail all the hospital's pharmacy medicines. Again, yield to Honorable Lynn to recommend action on this particular item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Catherine Lynn, we are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a requested resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's pharmacy medicines for first reading, waiving with reservation, Madam Chair.
For first reading reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this memorandum, City Health Office of Ozymes, represented by Mayor Attorney Henry N. D. F. Wominal as the First Party, Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Senior Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin S. Sanchanco, the Third Medical Chief, as the Second Party. That the First Party has requested to the Second Party that they will be sending patients of City Health Office for availing medicines from your pharmacy, provided that they have a valid prescription and the patients will pay for the charges, except for full health patients beneficiaries. This agreement shall commence on February 8, 2023 until February 8, 2024, or unless mutually terminated by the both parties. I would like to pass this for second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Passing this on the second and final reading, more with the Honorable Lynn, this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's pharmacy medicines. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks? Hearing none. Motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In session number 16, approved by this House committee is a written request for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Romero, to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Office and Mars Medical Center to avail all the hospital's maternity care package. Again, yield to wisdom, Honorable Catherine Lynn, to recommend action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Catherine Lynn, we are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the requested resolution, I would like to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's maternity care package for first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
For first reading reservations, asked by the Honorable Catherine Lynn. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this memorandum of agreement, City Health Office Ozymes, represented by Attorney Henry N. D. Wominal, City Mayor, and Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Senior Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin S. Sanchanco, the Third Medical Chief, as the Second Party. The First Party is engaged in the service of providing maternity care to pregnant women offering prenatal and postnatal care to mothers and newborns in barangay. The First Party to facilitate patients' admission to the Second Party bearing in mind the best interest of the mother and the unborn or newborn as the case. All cases handled by the First Party shall be exclusively referred to the Second Party subject to full health membership of patients or beneficiaries. The partner relationship is meant to maximize the maternity care package available to the full health members and their beneficiaries and make available to its availability to a wider patient base. The First Party shall render prenatal and postpartum services, shall do a pregnancy risk during the first prenatal visit, and shall provide ambulance vehicle to transport patient to the referral hospital. The referral shall accept all patients properly referred by the First Party. The Second Party shall accept referrals on 24 hours basis for obstetric, gynecologic, neonatal emergency cases and shall be entitled to reimbursement of claims. This agreement shall commence on February 8, 2023 until February 8, 2024. Due to its public interest, I would like to pass this for second reading and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Presented by the Honorable Lynn, to pass this on the second and final reading, this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to avail of the hospital's maternity care package. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. More for its approval. Is there any comment? Remarks? Hearing none. Motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In session number 17, the last insertion approved by this House committee is a request for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Romero, to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Office and Mars Medical Center to use the hospital's ambulance. Again, yield to Honorable Lynn to recommend action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Lynn is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to use the hospital's ambulance for first reading with reservation.
For first reading reservations, motion approved as being presented by the Honorable Catherine Lynn on first reading reservations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under this memorandum, the City Health Office of Ozyme, represented by Mayor N. D., represent as the First Party, and Mayor Hilaryun A. Romero Senior Medical Center, represented by Dr. Jesus Martin Sanchanco, the Third, as the Second Party. The First Party shall allow, the Second Party shall allow the First Party to maintain and operate the ambulance of the Second Party upon the request of the First Party. The agreement shall commence on February 8, 2023 until February 8, 2024, Madam Chair. I would like to pass this for second reading and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
For second reading, waiving the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules, passed by the Honorable Lynn, this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry E. F. Wominal Jr., to enter into and sign on behalf of Ozyme City, the memorandum of agreement between the City Health Office and Mars Medical Center to use the hospital's ambulance. Motion approved on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. No comment? Remarks? Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no pending items under number 10 basis for the reading. At this juncture, may I have the pleasure and privilege to hear on special matters from Honorable Ding Kisho, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Siso, you are now recognized for the Chair.
For PCL matters, Madam Chair, we will have now the, a copy of the January issue on the PCL newsletter and one of those, one in the newsletter is the Featured Programs and Projects of the City of Ozymes. Thank you very much. And I also would like to reiterate my request if for other committee chairmans and members who really wanted to publish the accomplishment of their respective committees and respective committees and they really wanted to have it known the entire province, kindly submitted to me so that we could have it published on our newsletter for the entire Ozymes Occidental. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Especially for the education committee, for the agriculture, for the health committees, if they have something to publish so that the entire Ozymesnon or Ozymesnon will have an idea, they could have it passed on me, Madam Chair.
To be subscribed to the PCL newsletter.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. At this point of time, we also have the official and privileged to hear on matters from Honorable Erwin Ochavilla, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Erwin Ochavilla, you are recognized for the Chair.
None for matters, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We now have the official and privileged to hear on ABC matters from Honorable John Doctor, Honorable Chair.
Honorable John Doctor, you are recognized for the Chair for some ABC matters.
For ABC matters, Honorable Chair, none for this time.
Noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We now have the official and privileged to hear on matters concerning the indigenous people from Honorable Bay Linda Batyon, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Bay Linda Batyon, you are recognized for the Chair for matters concerning indigenous people.
None for now, Madam Chair. Noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Before I proceed to adjourn the reception, I should like to report from my official travel to Canada City last Friday, February 10, I was asked by City Mayor Honorable Indy Wominal to attend the public consultation on constitutional reform held on Saturday, February 10 at the Museum of Science and Technology of San Jose Philippines Gymnasium, whereby the committee on constitutional amendments seated by Honorable Ropos Rodriguez came during the consultation together with our very own Congressman Honorable Ando Wominal, Honorable Chair. The consultation was regarding the civil bills filed in Congress and also during hospitals' fight in the Senate, requesting for amendments of the restrictive economic provisions of our constitution, particularly civil provisions on section, Article 12, Article 14, Article 16, other items in the constitution which limits the ownership of the companies by foreign investors, Honorable Chair. This attempt to revise the economic provision of the constitution is due to the existing environment of global economy whereby our listeners in Congress wish to open our doors to investors because developments are lag behind now in the economic development. In the Asian GDP per capita ranking, in 1970, we ranked number two with Malaysia as number one and number three is Thailand, fourth is Indonesia, and fifth is Vietnam. But in 1931, with the global economy in action, the Philippines is now ranked number five. Malaysia is still ranking number one, Thailand number two, Indonesia number three, and Vietnam number four. So there is a need for us to open our doors to investors of other nations. In fact, we had the recent news that President President Bongbong Marcos has traveled to Europe, to Japan inviting investors, but it was found out that the residents present are the provisions, the restrictive provisions in our economic provisions in our constitution, Honorable Chair. So there is a need to amend the constitution and the act which first is to a consistent assembly whereby Congress and Senate will meet, Honorable Chair, several representatives. Second is CONCON, Constitutional Commission, a third as Institute, and others being raised in that space fighting against is to have it done by a constitutional commission. And most proposals that delegates have elected simultaneously during the prior elections in October this year, Honorable Chair. So these are the few proposals. The amino bills, House Bill 6920, House Bill 4.21, House Bill 4.926, House Bill 698, and other bills which have similar goals to amend the restrictive provisions of our 1970 Constitution, Honorable Chair. So Congressman Ando alerted to me that he also raised that a similar forum will be held in our suburbs of the same city to consult public on this matter and plus we could make a present paper on this matter, Honorable Chair. And during the election, I spoke during the assembly explaining the idea of Ozymes, here by Attorney Indy Wominal, is supporting this initiative to amend the restrictive provisions of our constitution, Honorable Chair, so that the economy will be open to global investors and to provide economic development to our country, particularly the hiring of additional manpower due to the opening of civil companies, the circulation of economic, private economic development due to investments being done by civil multinationals and companies in other foreign countries, Honorable Chair. So this is my oral report, Honorable Chair, for everybody's information. Thank you. And I now proceed to the last item of our adjournment.
Honorable Majority Leader.
I understand your comments, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Majority Leader, thank you of your vital report this afternoon. So there is now a desire for some constitutional amendments and hopefully we'll be having an assembly here. I think, no? An assembly has to be done.
Yes, Congressman Ando wished a similar constitution be held in the suburbs of Ozyme City to consult people on the these house bills filed in Congress, Honorable Chair.
Yeah, because there is a need for the people to be informed on that particular part of the constitution that has to be amended, no? So again, I think
Yes, Honorable Chair. When I spoke during the assembly, I told the assembly that Attorney Indy Wominal and the NGO is willing to support these measures by the adequate ship guards will be put in place to protect civilian integrity of people of the country. Like, na amoy kung nga at mga inherent rights sa katawan sa Pilipinas nga ang isap isito nga di ma yatakan sa mga oman sa atong atong blawat. So adequate ship guards should be installed in the amendment and will relate to the wisdom of the delegates, the CONCON, which shows the delegates were qualified. In fact, the situation there during the assembly that delegates should be possessing higher qualifications, not just able to read and write. Usually, the qualifications only are able to read and write. They're forcing that the delegates should be well-educated, Honorable Chair, to be able to contribute the wisdom and acknowledge in the formulation of amendments to the constitution, particularly the restricted economic provisions of the constitution, Honorable Chair.
The candidate should be knowledgeable, no? Should be knowledgeable on the issues, yes.
Yes, because in our experience, we just allow delegates to file the condition, but they are not very educated, only able to read and write. Some are only high school graduates, although they are very popular in the community, Honorable Chair. So in order to amend the constitution, we need delegates who are well-qualified, will bear in the constitution and in the integrity of the provisions of the constitution, economic provisions, Honorable Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Honorable Siso, you are receiving.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It is really true that our 1987 constitution is very, very outdated because it's more than 30 years and there are really provisions in the constitution that needs to be repealed or changed or amended so that we could drive with the present conditions that we could deliver the services to the people. And may we know, coming from our representative on the consultation, if during the said consultation hearings, did they offer a percentage? Because in the present constitution, 100% corporation should be owned 100% by Filipinos. Did they offer a percentage for that matter, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, or 100% ownership of the foreign investors?
The contributed concept is that we'll no longer hold on to our restrictions that ownership by foreign firms should be only up to 40%. So we might give in to a higher percentage of ownership like example sa media, ownership media. There are arguments that we want to limit the ownership media to avoid the misinformation of our people by foreign thinking. But it was also argued that the Filipino media was already flooded with many foreign information. Social media is unlimited. Facebook, Twitter, Bible, other without it. People are flooded with different news, even fake news and information from other sources, foreign, Honorable Chair. So there's no longer any risk that people should be misinformed because anyway, all of which are already having developments of this information and all other information, Honorable Chair. So there's no danger anymore. Kinaan na magitanan, makita na tan, global media, makita ka sa YouTube, nanatanan, Twitter, Facebook, Google, Chrome, everything is available to all Filipinos, Honorable Chair. So there's no danger. Kung ang ato media, i-operate to be owned by foreigners, 100%. So the only favorable claimer is the possible hiring of labor Filipinos. It will increase the, it will lower the poverty line with the hiring of many Filipinos in the workforce. Of the napod, kayo magsiyog, ato sa lainas, ato mga Filipinos, ato mga siming, sa kibar ko, sa kibar ko sa foreign boss, the most revered nga mga tabantian, Filipinos, yeah, Honorable Chair. So niyan, siyento po sa Pilipinas, muda ko, ibasi maya sa, siyento sa ilang, ilang country. Yato, euro siyento, kundi basi dakw na kaya ba, euro, to, ato Filipino, ato gamay, ato minimum is. So ang ilang standards, nasal is higher, dollar, euro, Japanese marks. So mas higher ang atong wage sa mga labor sa foreign mga companya, mga manis Pilipinas. So una'y mga idea sa, gaposan sa mga assembly, Honorable Chair. And most of the delegates from the academ, from the professionals, lawyers, and the NGO, and service service, ah, ah, CISOs, pabor good sa amendments, Honorable Chair, sa Canada City, pabor good. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Okay. Thank you of your honorable report, Honorable Majority Floor Leader. Is there any reactions or some queries regarding the report? We just wait for when will be the assembly, no? Na aman't you na mga asimlia para may bawahan sa mga katawan to the issues at hand.
If there are no more other reasons that my colleagues would like to be involved, you're Sosbadi, Honorable Chair, I will now be inclined to proceed with my present task. I'm about to adjourn. Delegation, Honorable Chair.
Session is adjourned.